This conference will now be recorded.
Mr. Eason?
Here.
Mr. Gengler?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mr. Welch?
Here.
Mayor Rogers?
Here. All those wishing to participate in a prayer and a pledge of allegiance, please stand.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, in face of many choices that life increasingly requires, help us to make the right decisions and to walk in the right direction. We know your will is good for all members of our community. We also pray for the police, the fire department, and city workers, and hospital workers for their safety and the work they do. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, under new items, we'd like to add number three, which would be a resolution adopting by reference the 2021 comprehensive fee schedule.
I move we accept the addition of item number three for a comprehensive fee schedule.
Motion made and seconded. Well, we're going to switch the order, if that's right, to item number seven, executive session, and item number eight, communications and reports. There's no new items. It's just switching the two in the order. So, a motion, I will, all those in favor of adding item three to the agenda and switching seven and eight, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to approve the agenda.
I move.
Second.
Those in favor for the approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five oh. Any recognition of visitors? Saying none. Are there any comments from the items, for items not on the agenda? Saying none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
I'll make motion we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor for the approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five oh. Moving on to new business.
Consider a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas City to execute a professional services agreement with Eliana Interpreting and Translation Services LLC for interpreter services for Arkansas City Municipal Court.
I will move that we approve a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas City to execute a professional services agreement with Eliana, the BL, Interpreting and Translation Services LLC for interpreter services for the Arkansas City Municipal Court.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the translation services. All those in favor, it's a voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five oh. Next up on the agenda.
Consider a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas City to accept a proposal submitted by Lowery Construction LLC of Oxford, Kansas for construction of a new wastewater treatment plan administration building for an amount not to exceed $270,704.25.
Rod Finlow wasn't able to be here, so I will get on his behalf. The city sent out eight requisitions for the wastewater treatment plan administration building. Three proposals were received, and one proposal was from Lowery Construction LLC Oxford in the amount of $270,704.25. By separating this building from the wastewater treatment plan upgrade contract, contracting that house, the city will save a considerable amount of money. Death lockers, lab room furniture, and cabinetry will be provided by the city. Since we received Mr. Lowery's proposal, staffs met with him, fine-tuned construction, made it that Mike Bellis and Tony Caffey. We've added a suspended ceiling, deleted an entryway, and Mike Bellis pointed out that we will not need three-phase electric. We can go with one-phase, so that's further going to reduce this cost down. And Mike Bellis is here, and Mr. Lowery is here, if you have any questions.
Yeah, I'm at three-phase going to one-phase. What do you mean by that, Mike? I mean... Because, I mean, those motors and stuff are going to work out, those three-phase, don't they?
Inside the administration building, there's not going to be any big motors there with that three-phase. And if you go with three-phase, the energy's going to charge a premium price. So we'll save part of their money, like what we call single-phase.
Okay.
Which is like what you have in your house.
Okay.
I wanted to ask him how many doormats.
Rod is here now, so if you have any questions, he has.
If we, Mike, we prove this, the cost of the steel and everything, it's, we got, you know, everything's going up every day. I mean, it's...
Locked in.
Is it locked in? I mean...
Yeah, we don't see any proceeding. A more building is going to be the outside of the building.
Okay.
That was the only thing that kept going up, so we have it locked in at this time.
Okay. Thank you. And we're saving, what, about $400,000 or $350,000, three-plus?
I think the original was about $560,000.
Yeah, $600,000, was it?
Something, yeah.
It was a lot.
It kept going up.
About half.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Thanks, guys. Any questions?
No, I'll make a motion. We consider the resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas City to accept a proposal submitted by Lowery Construction LLC of Oxford, Kansas for the construction of a new wastewater treatment plant, WWTP administration building, for the amount not to exceed $270,704.25.
Second. All those in favor, it's another voice vote. All those in favor to approve the contracts, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five oh. Next up.
Consider a resolution adopting by reference the 2021 comprehensive fee schedule and repealing resolution number 2021-063415.
So this changes page thirty, which is the sewer utility rates. This will go into effect in 2022. It would, so currently in '21, the base charge is $22.85. So in '22, the base charge would go to $25.33. And the...
$25.53.
And then the per thousands, so that would, that includes the first 2,000 gallons of treatment. Per thousand, over 2,000 gallons would go from $4.27 to $4.77 in '22. And then in '23, the base charge goes up to $28.54. And the per gallon, 1,000 gallon charge goes to $5.33. And then the final step would be in '24 to go to $31.89 and $5.96. And then after that, the next two years is just the annual inflationary increase like normal.
Like the 2% annual?
Five. And that steps us up to the point where by '24, we're making the loan payments. And so this will kind of ease us, ease ourselves up to that point.
So with the utility bills, not just the water and sanitation, what is the average, then, that that will cost us to go out?
Well, so I don't know for the total, but for like the... So an average, so for a 5,000 gallon bill for a utility user would be 35.66 currently. And it would go to $39.85.
Oh, okay.
And '22, it would go, and '24, it would be $49.76. And then in '26, which would be, jump up a few years, would be $52.03.
And the average household usually, what, I think it was like $3,600, is that what? Or was it $3,800 gallons or something?
$1,000.
$4,000.
$4,000. This would be, this was just estimated for 5,000, but, you know, when we did the rate study, you had to... Yeah. A point to throw that out there, but yeah. That would be higher than an average household would.
So, the base charges, the first 2,000, not 4,000?
Yeah, the base charge includes the first 2,000.
Okay. And then the 4.77 is the next 1,000?
Over 1,000 gallons over that 2,000 after that.
Right.
Another benefit of going through small amounts over three years is it puts us in a better cash position at the end of that, at '24. And that'll be important as we move into the next permitting cycle around the, you know, that 2027. We'll have, we'll have to do something, whether it be chemical or some additional construction. So having some additional cash on hand at that point will be, will be a good thing to help level out the need for rate increases at that point. Kind of a benefit there as well, so.
I move that we amend the comprehensive fee schedule by adopting the 2021 comprehensive fee schedule and repealing resolution number 2021-063415.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the reference, the city's 2020 comprehensive fee schedule, and repeal the resolution as stated. All those in favor, it's a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five oh. Next up, I believe that was the last of the new resolutions. We'll move up to staff presentation, staff report presentations.
I'll go very quickly, because Eric's, Chief Burr's presentation will be much more informative than this. So tomorrow night, there'll be a candidate forum for the USD 470 Board of Education, and it'll be at 7:00 PM at the Water Treatment Facility. In-person advanced voting for local city and school elections will be available at 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM on October 29th to 29th in the conference room at the Water Treatment Facility. The 12th Annual Joby Avery Community Spirit Award will be 6:00 PM Tuesday, October 26th at the USD 470's Avery Learning Center. That starts at 5:45 for the social time. Then, of course, the year, after year off, okay, after this last year off, the 89th Annual Arcala Festival kicks off Wednesday, October 27th, and goes through Saturday, October 30th. City Halls will close at noon on Friday, the 29th, so everybody can participate in the events. The next City Commission Study Session will be scheduled for the 29th. Since we'll be closing City Hall at noon, do you guys want to forego a work session that day?
They're just trying to get out of feeding us, right?
I think...
Burgers and chicken noodle soup and Jeffy Puffs, just right.
I might be able to buy you all a phone cake, too, if you'd like.
Oh, you'll buy the phone cake?
Yeah. So we'll just plan on not having a work session that day, then. Um, so then that creates, so what do you want to do about the, Andrew, on the time capsule? We don't have a work session? Okay. So, so that'll, the time capsule, they'll be kind of rededicating that. They won't bury it that day. I think you're just going to have the...
Have the items out for review, and that's kind of the last time people can bring stuff to come in.
Um, special trick-or-treat event will be 6:00 to 8:00 PM Sunday, October 31st downtown. And for those who do not vote in advance, the election day for the local city and school board candidates will be from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. I know we remember second at the Central Christian Church across the street here. Summit Street, so if everything works out, they have the parts in to fix the railroad there on Summit. So there'll be a detour. So the idea, the plans are for that to start November 1st. It'll be a five-day detour, and the detour will basically go up Summit, up north, to the north end of town. So Summit traffic will be very busy for about five days there. So we're holding our fingers that that's actually going to happen, that they don't reschedule it. But that's the point so far.
At least they're not doing it during our quality.
All the traffic, 166 would go north on Summit?
Yeah, up to the 77 bypass, and then back around. Same with the...
Okay.
Anybody coming from the east will have to go up over.
Okay.
And then I put a deal on your, on your desk there. November 10th is the legalist, how these legislative, the closest one to us is in South Hutch. So if anybody's interested in going to that, so let me know. We'll get signed up. And the utility, it consists of having local legislators there and having a chance to go over the legislative slate for this, the league. That kind of gives us an idea of what's going to happen and what they see happening. And then there's also a kind of a pre-meeting, pre-dinner meeting, and that would be geared for more selected 101. So if we have any new elected commissioners that they may want to attend, that'll be kind of a, kind of get up to speed on things like meetings and those types of, those kind of those things that you need to learn right away type items. And of course, anybody else that wants to go to those, there's always a good refreshers, too. So just let me know if you're interested in that, and register and find a way to get us all there. The other, the other closest ones in Iowa, and then the rest of them are, unless you want to see the far west parts of the state or up in...
Very good.
And that would be November 10th. So I know we've talked about this a little bit, but the real housing in the city district has expanded this past year to include downtown upper stories. And I've been working with Josh on this to get the boundaries established of what that may look like. And we're working with Gilmore and Bell, and so I hope to have some, a contractor in agreement with you guys next time. But the idea is of being able to expand the, an RHID district to the downtown that would provide some, another tool to help develop the upper stories with housing. And so we're basically mimicking the historical district. There's a few places that didn't make sense that aren't in there, and some that should be there that aren't in the historical. And we've got a legal description of it, and so what we do is precertify that area. And then as a project might come up that once they want to access that program, then each project would be its own district. And that way, they have a 25-year period to use the proceeds of that. So we don't want to make the whole area a big, one big district. We just want to certify it. And then as projects come along, that gives everybody a chance to utilize a full 25 years on the project. So just want to get more information on that to you guys, but I just wanted you to know. We're working on that, kind of getting together some information.
Randy, what do you mean 25 years is?
So, so it's kind of a tax increment type thing, just like the neighborhood revitalization. And so that has a 10-year limit, but on a rural housing of city district, you have a dollar amount that's allowable as, to be recouped from the increased taxes. And...
It's up to 25 years?
It can take up to 25 years to get there. So let's say if you have $100,000 of allowable expenses, and you're able to get a rebate for, get that full amount back in 10 years, then that's the end of it. But if it takes 15 or 20 or up to 25 years to get that full investment back...
Is there a limit on the top side of that? I mean, how much?
Dollar amount. So you have to have, you have to be able to certify a dollar amount. And there's certain things that you can use. So like on bear dirt, it's the purchase of the dirt, infrastructure like streets and pipes and all that stuff. And so whatever that cost is, you can get that rebated back over a period of however many years up to the amount that you have certified. The big, you can do infrastructure on downtown, like if you have to do a bunch of work for, if the sewer needs work, or parking, or stuff like that. But it also, the big difference on the downtown one is that you can also do the vertical piece, the walls, the inside stuff. So we're on greenfield, infill, you can't use the structures, just the infrastructure to...
That'd be huge.
It's another tool, and try and give as many tools in our boxes as we can to help downtown.
Hey, how many bills, you know, how many bills do we have downtown? That's locally owned, or is it, or most of them out of state? Do we know that, or do you guys have a feel for that?
Half and half. And then we had a good league conference, Canyon and I were able to go, and some of the, some of the things that were there were the RHID, there was a little... Emporia was there, kind of, because they've been doing a lot with their downtown, and they were there giving a presentation on some of the things they've been doing. It was pretty informative. I got to participate in the infrastructure and economic development work session with the Garden City City Manager and the Hay City Manager. So that was, it was probably the worst for anybody to attend since I was part of the panel, but that was, that was interesting. They had one that I attended to, why the city manager needs to know about water. So that was put on by KMU, and it just gave a really good overview of some of the workforce development issues that we're going to be facing, and operator certification problems that we're going to be facing as guys like Rod retire out. Where are we going to find those guys with that higher certification to run these systems? So, yeah, we're going to try to keep Rod around a long time, so. Just things like that. And then another real good one was regional housing collaboration, and that was based on some things that's going on in southeast Kansas with Chanute and some of those communities. They have a company out of California that's looking to locate Chanute, but they're doing 3D printed housing. And it's not like the, what you see where they do the concrete, you know, on site. These would be, they're printing panels, and they'll have a composite skin with an insulation in the metal, and then they, they took them together. But they, they think the cost will be low, and the ability to build them, they'll be on slabs, and they can build them quickly. So that'll be something interesting to kind of keep our eye on. And if they do relocate there in Chanute, that'll be, be close to us, and it may be an interesting building.
Lake O'Leary.
Yeah.
I've seen that on YouTube.
But that's some of the things that were of interest that I participated in my dad's one time. But you know, my trip there wasn't wasted on building some things. That's all I've got.
Thank you. I know we have Keith Burr here to speak. We're ready for you.
Mr. Mayor, it's like a mission. What I'm going to do, I've got a PowerPoint presentation for you. We're going to talk about... So as I go through this, if you have questions, just let me know. So much, and I'm actually going to do this, so I'm not like out here.
Okay.
So every year, the Kansas Bureau of Investigation puts out crime... All of this, all of these statistics are available online. Go to KBI. They, they'll have these for many, many, many years. So before I get too deep into this, how the KBI gets our information is that every time that an officer goes out to take a report about a crime, and they fill out a Kansas standard offense report, that information is uploaded to KBI. And that's how they track our crime rate. We also fill out arrest reports when we obviously make arrests in regards to those crimes. So what we'll discuss is the crime statistics for 2020 through KBI. We'll outline how 2021 is shaping up in comparison with last year. And then we'll talk about department focus through the last quarter of 2021, and then maybe some goals for '22 moving forward. So when we talk about crime index offenses, these are the things that KBI really focuses on. It's murder, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, aggravated battery. So those make up the violent crime index, which are basically person crimes. And when we talk about aggravated assault, that is usually a crime that's committed with a weapon against a person or has resulted in some type of bodily harm, like great bodily harm. When we talk about property crime index, we're talking about burglary, larceny theft, motor vehicle theft, and arson. So let's talk about Kansas overall. So this is basically a snapshot for Kansas in 2020. The crime index rate actually increased 1.4% overall in Kansas from 2020 at 29.3 offenses per 1,000 people. So you're going to see these numbers throughout this report. So when you see that 29.3, that's per 1,000 citizens. And then in 2019, it was at 29.7. Actually, that should be a decrease. Violent index crime showed a 9.3 increase from 2019. So in 2020, we saw a lot more violent crime increase. The state average was 4.7 offenses per 1,000 people. And then the last one with property crime index actually decreased 1.2% in 2020 as compared to 2019. The state average in 2020 was 25 offenses per 1,000 people. So in Arkansas City, according to that report, and I kind of have to throw in that the, the population numbers may be different looking in different places, but according to the KBI reported, it was 11,589. So our overall crime index was 39.2, which was quite a bit higher than the state average at 29.3. The violent crime index rate was 4.5, but Kansas was 4.7. So we have some things to celebrate. Property crime index rate, 34.7, again, bigger than the Kansas average of 25. So this is basically how we stack up with some of the other places in the state of Kansas. As you can see, Arkansas City and Winfield are very, very close. Not only geographically, but our crime rates are also very close. And for the first time in quite some time, our property crime index is actually less than Winfield's. However, that middle category, the violent crime of 4.5 to their 3.9, what that translates to, translates to is about 10 offenses. And it was mostly in that aggravated assault, aggravated battery category. So it was just 10 offenses that basically separated the two of us, but equated into that difference in the percentage. So you can look at other places. Parsons is similar in size, actually a little smaller. But you can see that their crime index, which is in the blue, is 53.2. That's, that's really kind of high, a 9.9 for violent crime. And so you can kind of work your way down through there. Wellington, again, is a little bit smaller than us. Their numbers are a little bit lower. Coffeyville and Independence, much higher rates out there. So I would be remiss if I didn't bring up the whole 10 most dangerous cities in Kansas. I don't know if you guys are familiar with this article that has been circulated on Facebook, and it really kind of got traction earlier in the year. But I really wanted to take that article and look at the top 10 cities that it lists. And in looking at the site, I tried to find out exactly where they pulled their information from, and it's really kind of sketchy. But what I wanted to do is just illustrate to you that in that article in January of 2021, these are the top 10 all the way down. So from Wichita to Augusta, and they rank us at number four. But as you can see, our crime rates are a lot lower. The only one that's less is Augusta. Ford, we got to put in there at number 10. They're the only ones with anything less than what we have. Obviously, the bigger locations, Wichita, we already talked about, Independence, Topeka, Coffeyville, Salina. Marion is kind of a wild card. It's in the kind of the Kansas City area, but it's about the same size as we are. So I really felt it necessary to share this information with you all that when you hear those kind of things, and you see those kind of articles that come about saying that we're one of the 10 most dangerous cities in Kansas, it's pretty obvious that our crime rate doesn't reflect that at all. So if we compare some of the previous years through the KBI reports, we're actually trending down, which is great. This is what we want. So our crime index from 2018, 48.2, dropping to 45.3 in 2019, and last year, 39.2. And then our violent crime, for whatever reason, 2019, we were at 5.5, but we're coming back down from that. And then, of course, property crimes, that's always something traditional... And then of course, property crimes, that's always something traditionally that we've, that has been kind of our Achilles heel. That we try, we try really hard to get around some of those property crimes and and I'll, I'll talk about maybe some things that, some strategies that we can do to affect that even further. But as you can see, downward trend all the way down to 34.7 for 2020. So really more than anything else, we really want to continue this trend going into 2021 and it's kind of looking that way. But we'll just have to see once all the official numbers come out. So essentially into 2020 versus through three quarters. So this is just through the end of September of this year. Last year, we had two homicides. This year, we've had not one. Last year, we only had one reported rate. We're up to six so far this year with a quarter left. Robberies low, one in 2020. We've had two this year so far. The aggravated assaults and batteries, they, they're, they're way down. We want to try and keep those down as much as we can. So all of last year, 48, 25 through three quarters this year. Burglary, I think we're probably in a place where we're going to meet that 69 number or probably exceed it, depending on what happens in this third quarter. Traditionally, when it starts cooling down, people tend to get out more. And so we have a problem with like car burglaries. So people who might leave their cars unlocked and valuables in view or even leave their keys in their car. Those all contribute to that property crime index. And then of course, theft. We were at 300 thefts last year and 197. So I think they were going to come in below that for 2020.
Chief on the theft. What constitutes a record of that? I mean, how much is like anything or is it okay?
Anything is reported stolen. So it could be potted plants on the front porch, could be a flag. It could be, you know, bicycle. Pretty much everything constitutes theft if it weren't to us. So talking about the goals to reduce the crime index. So earlier I said that we were trending down and we want to continue to go down. And it's about this time of year that as a department, I'll get with the leadership team and we'll talk about setting goals for 2022. So crime and traffic safety is obviously going to be top priority. We're setting those goals for 2022. We've got the last two months-ish, about two and a half months of this year to set our goals for 22. But looking forward, especially about the structure of the police department, crime and traffic safety accountability. So we really want to try to work in as much accountability for those numbers as we can. So that way, me as the chief executive officer of the department, I can go to someone and ask where are we at with crime rate? Where are we at with traffic accident reduction? So really the premise there is that the operations captain, Jim Holloway, will be responsible for traffic safety. So his realm of influence and control is with patrol shifts. So that's just logical that he can mobilize traffic and go to places where that accidents are happening and doing traffic enforcement, participating in grants and those kinds of things. Our support services captain who will be in charge of investigations, school resource officers, records and our evidence. And I don't have someone into that position yet, but I should in December. That person's going to be responsible for crime reduction. So everything that has to do with trying to reduce those crime rates is going to fall on the support services captain. So one of the things that we've identified that we want to do is try to power up our investigations division. So traditionally we've had two personnel in investigations. And we take an awful lot of reports. So for two investigators, that's, that's a lot of follow-up and a lot of cases that may not get the attention that it deserves. So what I'm proposing, and we've already kind of made steps to do this, is to add a third person into our investigations division. So we'll have a lieutenant, a sergeant and a line detective within our investigations division with the hopes that we're going to really follow up on violent crimes. So that way we can drive violent crime indexes down. The other thing is that we have a mental health officer that we received a grant from and she also will call the lieutenant within the investigations division. And we've been utilizing her to do domestic violence follow-ups. Which we've kind of, that, that's kind of a piece that we, that we haven't really done too much is that when we respond to a domestic violence call, we take care of what needs to be taken care of on the front end. But now that we have Officer Tuckstorn, she can follow up at a later time to make sure that our victims are walking through protection from abuse orders, taking additional photos if needed and just offering support from the department. So to me, that, that's making headway there. We also want to offer support to those in mental crisis. I could probably do a whole other presentation about our mental crisis responses. But that's definitely something that we're working on and that's going to be included in our goals for 22 as well. We're working closely with prosecution now. And investigations is also going to work closely with patrol shifts. There's also going to be an emphasis on drug enforcement. So because we haven't had the staff and, and I'll get to staffing in just a minute. We haven't been able to do as much drug enforcement as we wanted. We haven't been able to contribute to the county drug task force. So with this setup, putting an extra person into investigations, we will be able to do more drug enforcement, especially on the local level.
I have a question, Chief. It's kind of a silly question, but getting back to that mental health officer. A lot of times the people don't take their medication. Are we going to be able to follow up on that or is that too much to?
So Ashley has time. So if, if, if we respond to a mental health crisis call and we get them to services, Officer Tuckstorn's job right now is to perform follow-ups. So most of the time she calls us and says, hey, do you have your equipment set? Do you have a way to get there? She doesn't really talk too much about medication, but really she's kind of focused on making sure that they get to the services that they need. And you know, we're in a position where she can transport them out to Fort County to get to their meetings.
Well, that's a big thing there.
Yeah.
Yeah. We never had that before.
Use the excuse, I can't get there.
Right. Yep. So one of the things with property crimes is we really need to push hard and educate our citizens on how they can protect themselves. So we're going to use all of our social media power. And by now we use 9pm routine, which is basically a program that around nine o'clock every night. It just reminds people who go out and make sure that their yard is tidied up, that they didn't leave a bicycle out or a lawnmower to make sure that there's no valuables inside in their car and their car is locked up and there's no keys in it. So that has been a pretty successful program. We've been doing that for probably about three years now on all of our social media platforms. So we're going to continue with that. And I think that we can do more about educating people. So we're going to really work hard on getting press releases out into the newspaper to educate people about property crimes. Earlier this year, we did Coffee with a Cop and traditionally we've picked restaurants like Bricks and Graves and Stevie Joe's and those kinds of places. Well, what we did this year is we kind of targeted some specific areas. So we went to Lakeview Estates and had a coffee with a cop there and we had a chance to talk with the residents about the issues that they're dealing with. We also did an event, Metawalk at their, at their pool. And then we also did one at Westwood Villa. So that's more of a targeted approach to Coffee with a Cop or Pop with a Cop. So that way we get a chance to talk to residents about the issues that they're specifically dealing with. And hopefully we can identify some of those things and make it better for them. Something that we've done in the past, we've done some door-to-door education in highly affected areas. So we use a software that helps show where crime is taking place. And so, you know, it's, it's not, it's not far fetched to think that we can get out and go door-to-door and start talking to people about maybe, you know, securing their cars and making sure that everything's tied, tidied up and locked up at night. So areas of emphasis within the department. The, we are using a committee approach to continue and expand some of the programming in some of our key areas. So we've got staff that have been working on these committees within the last three to four months now. So we have just identified some things that we could just do better at. So recruitment and retention. So that's a big one. Because right now, we can't just take for granted that, that good people are going to come find us. We have to try to go out and spread the word about what it's like to serve in our city, which is amazing. So we take every opportunity we can with that to do recruitment. And we also want to look at retention too, because that's something that I've heard from a lot of people who have been there 10, 15, 20 years. Is, you know, you guys are working really hard to try to bring in new people. Don't forget about us 15, 20 year olds. So we're really working hard there as well. Community outreach, that has really been our bread and butter over the last five to six years. We, we will continue with that. And we actually have a committee now that is looking at different ways that we can do community outreach. And, you know, trying to think outside the box a little bit and maybe do some different things. Bumped in with that is juvenile support. So we've identified that juvenile delinquency is an issue within our community. And we as a police department want to offer as much support not only to the juveniles, but also their families or their guardians. So we really just want to be a resource to those families. The next one is officer wellness. They're doing a tremendous amount of work in the area of awards and recognitions. They're also, they've also put together a physical fitness plan for the police department. So this is very important because the mental health of our officers is, is, is very important too. We can't forget about them. And we have a very tough job and we see a lot of different things. So this committee is devoted to looking at those types of programs that are going to help us. And then the last one is special events. And this is kind of a catch-all, an in-person language interpreters. So really what I wanted to do was to expand everyone's knowledge when it came to being able to plan big events. So we have a committee that's actually working with command staff to put together plans for like Arcoala and Last Run, National Night Out and those kinds of things. So it's really broadening out the amount of knowledge in being able to plan big events like that. And then the last one, you know, we're just struggling with in-person interpreters. We use a telephone service and sometimes it has limitations. So we're really trying to identify some ways recruit in-person interpreters. We're also looking at ways to teach Spanish to the officers as well. So we want to try to make that investment moving forward too. So it's just to recap, our crime rates are trending down and we want to keep them going in that direction. Proactive steps on our part can help that process. One of our biggest priorities right now is hiring. So as, as it is right now, we're about five officers short. So our recruitment is important. We have about three that are in the final stages of hiring. So I'll be back probably in a few weeks with some swearing in. So but that is a true priority is to, to make sure that we have enough people to be able to serve the people of our city. And to get them trained and, and be able to put our plans into place. We also want to continue our high level of community interaction because that has truly been important to us. You know, one thing that I was talking to realtors just the other night, talking to them about realtor safety. And we, we got to, we got sidetracked and we were talking about community interaction. And I explained it to them that, you know, it's important for us as police officers to get out of our cars and be comfortable in talking to people and communicating with them. But there's times that we go to schools or we go to, to lunch and we go to lunch recess and we play with the kids. That makes us feel good. And that's almost like a timeout for us for the things that we're dealing with on a daily basis and the things that we have to see. It's always good for us to have those positive interactions. And, you know, I, I talked about officer wellness and, and I think that our community outreach is really an intricate part of making sure that we're healthy and that we're happy. So have you guys had any questions for me at all?
I met one of your officers at the gas station the other day. She was giving gas. My dog was running loose. I was chasing it with my and I finally caught it and it looked up and there she was and I go, oh, hi. She says, I should know your name. I said, no, you shouldn't. But you're doing a good job. She smiled.
Appreciate everything. Thank you, Chief.
It was so fun. It was like, should have been on YouTube.
McAndrew's got some fall cleanup photos.
Well, that's cool.
I always like to give a few minutes to tout what we accomplished during our cleanup day. Appreciate our volunteers that come out and help us. Show how we're trying to help our residents any way we can. I didn't have as much interest this year. Usually we get quite a few calls from people that need just help little things or clean up yards. I'm surprised there wasn't more interest. Hopefully that means we're getting our props a little bit, but it may have been a communication issue. So we'll do a little more outreach in the spring. Thanks. But most of our labor was James Fry's Ace's kids this year. We did have a few other volunteers that helped. Robert Cortland, you might remember, has helped in previous years. He came down with two foreign exchange students from Winfield High School to work on a couple of his properties, but predominantly James's kids did most of the work. So this is them. I believe there's a map in your packet that Josh prepared for me. This is at location number five, 23 North Sixth Street. Lady had a lot of brush and limbs that needed hauled off. So they did a good job loading that up and James would drive that down to F Street, of course. So really appreciate the help there. We spent about 30, 40 minutes at that location. It was quite a bit of vegetation. That's just across the street from the Northwest Community Center. And I believe that's a disabled resident that needed help as well. And that's Robert's trailer. So we always appreciate when he comes down because it helps us haul more stuff more quickly. And he didn't have to do that. He had his own properties to work on and I called him that morning and said, hey, could you swing over here for us? So I really appreciate what he does for us. This is one of his properties. This is number four, 518 North Fourth Street. And those are the two exchange students. One's from Kazakhstan and the other is from to the Eastern European country. Very nice fellows. One thing I didn't notice till off topic, but you've not really got competitive is if you've known anyone that's involved with this. One of them told us he was out of like 5,600 applicants. I think they chose like 20 or so. I don't remember the exact numbers, but it's incredibly highly competitive for them. You have a chance to come over to America. I thought it was kind of neat that they got a chance to do some community service and kind of see how people need assistance and maybe they'll take some of that back to their countries as well. So it was neat to meet them. This is the backside of another of his properties, a block north. Location number three is 610 Fourth Street. Again, just had to clean up a lot of brush and get that stuff out of there to help him out. So they did a lot of raking and clipping and all the fun things that we do to maintain properties. And then finally they finished off by going down to Veterans Lake and they walked around the trail and picked up trash and beer cans out of the brush. So that is the long and short of it. Now also James went and hauled up two TV for a lady that had to be hauled out of a basement. She was also disabled and brought that to the curb. And Gareth had another really successful e-waste recycling event at Wilson Park. We need to do a better job of dumpsters, but that's working. And I think he started to see that they were getting rid of the old two TVs and finally getting those to landfill. Now we're starting to see more of the flat screens come in. So good, that's good for him because that's more recyclable content and less in our landfills. But hopefully people are finding that to be an advantage. For spring, I think we're going to try and do something a little more targeted and organized, talking to city staff that have an interest in us working on the underpasses. So clean up trash because everything just washes down there. But maybe also looking at, I know we've had some upkeep and painting and stuff down there, but looking at, you know, doing some enhancement of that and maybe we've got some interest in mural projects and things. So we might try to organize that a little better and maybe even have some traffic control in place for the safety of volunteers. We're still kind of working the idea of that. But we'll still continue to do our cleanups as well. So it goes away really help our elderly and disabled residents. So they don't have to do cases and all this not fun interactions. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for continuing to support us in doing this. I think it's a good community outreach tool. Thank you for continuing to support us in doing this. I think it's a good community outreach tool.
Thank you, Andrew. Next up, I would enter, make, like to make a motion that, that the governing body recess into executive session to discuss the renewal of the city manager's contract due to, due to expire pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1 Personnel Matters of Non-Elected Personnel. I'd like Randy to be in there. And it is 6:20. So do you think 20 minutes? Is that enough?
Yeah.
So we will, so we will, the open meetings will resume and the commission chambers will set 6:41. So I guess it's 20 minutes. So.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
This conference will now be recorded.
Seeing there is no other business, I would like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting for tonight.
Second that?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Turn the lights off.